Good evening. I'm sorry we are running late. Welcome to the Wednesday, March 6, 2024, meeting of the Chappaqua Central School District Board of Education. The board has been in executive session since 5:47. Can I have a motion, please, to reopen the public meeting? All in favor? Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are actually going to start tonight with something really fun, which is recognizing some of our incredible student athletes. Actually, a very large number of extremely high-performing student athletes, so...
So we're going to turn it over to our athletic director, Jamie Block, who will invite our students up to the stage, and Hillary and Kaylee will be involved in placing a medal and a hat on our state champions. So, go ahead, Jamie.
First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight, and obviously, a huge thank you to the Board of Education and the support that the entire community does for all of our student athletes. It was an incredible winter season, and this weekend just like really put it over the top. It's one thing to go and perform, but it's one thing to perform your best in, under pressure at a certain time, and it's always very difficult in sports to be the hunted. It's much easier to be the hunter than the hunted, and I can tell you, these athletes were definitely the hunted. They were not welcome at the pool, they were not welcome at the track by anyone else in New York State. And so it was a really incredible performance. So I'm going to start off with one of our top divers, Jonas Balchitas. Jack Cornish. Jack Cornish was 12th in the 200 freestyle, also the state champion in the 500 freestyle. Jack? He's swimming somewhere right now. Eric Engel. Eric was ninth in the 200 freestyle, ninth in the 100 freestyle, eighth in the 200 freestyle, and state champion in the 400 freestyle relay. Oliver Engel, sixth place in the 200 IM, third place in the 100 backstroke, state champion 200 medley relay, and state champion in the 400 freestyle relay. LJ Galata, eighth place 200 freestyle relay, state champion 200 medley relay. Jaden Holmes, eighth place 200 freestyle relay. Adam Kamal, eighth place 200 freestyle relay. Connor McHugh, seventh place 50 freestyle, third place 100 fly, state champion 200 medley relay, and state champion in the 400 freestyle relay. It's Connor's third year in that event. And I'm sure he's tired of me saying it, and Aquaman, Eric Nadecki. Eric was second place in the 100 breaststroke, the state champion in the 200 IM, the state champion in the 200 medley relay, and the state champion in the 400 freestyle relay. So this swim team has now done their table for one, that's their unique saying this year, and they had a tic-tac-toe board, three state championships in a row at the states. Also, the 200 medley relay set a state, meet, and NISFA record, and the 400 freestyle relay, which they had dominated for three years, they've won that relay in a row, and track actually won it in the spring, so we really own the 400. They crushed their own record for the Federation, NISFA, state, and meet, which is pretty remarkable. I think they, I think it was about four seconds better than their their time in the prelims, which is, is pretty amazing. So, very special group, and today was outstanding. They got to go visit all the schools, along with the track team they'll bring up here. So these seniors are going to be really sorely missed, but we've got two stud athletes on the stage. They're going to bring it all together next year, and I wish them all the best in their endeavors next year as they swim. We'll keep them up here for track. So now we're going to start, we go from the pool to the lanes. Not to be outdone, the indoor track team also is the three-time county, three-time class, sectional champion, and now they're down at the indoor track meet at Ocean Breeze in Staten Island, which Mr. Albach, yes, it's a beautiful place, he has to go visit. And they put on quite a showing down there. So the members that we have here tonight are members of the state champion 200, 200 relay. And we have Will Weiss. Nico Wright, who is the fastest man in all of New York State, The Flash. He was the state champion in the 55 meters and the 4x200 relay. Ben Ho, state champion 4x200 meter relay. Kyle McKinney, state champion 4x200 meter relay. And one of the all-time greatest finishes probably you will ever see in indoor track in the 4x200 meter relay, Seamus Finn. Dr. Seppi has watched it like 15 times. So an absolutely incredible performance, and four of those student athletes also won the 4x4 in the spring last year, that same group, and I think it's the same order, too. I think, right? Am I correct on that? Oh, you anchored it last year. So very special, very special weekend for everyone, and obviously, I always like to kind of say it, how they represent Chappaqua as ambassadors of this community is really the best. So today, we had a really special day, and a huge thank you to Grafflin Administration, Roaring Brook, and West Orchard. We went down on a tour of the buildings. The kids were going crazy. It was a lot of fun. We had a lot of Roaring Brookers here. All they really wanted to do was go play basketball on the playground. Eric Engel wanted to go see a book he had published in the library, and it was a great day. And Eric and LJ and Nico gave a very riveting speech about, you know, how well we offer here, and do your studies, and make sure you're very disciplined, and like the first graders, guys. It was a great sales though for Greeley. It was great. It was a great day. They're going to represent us well in the spring, and I wish you all the best. Thank you so much, and thank you Board of Education for all your support.
So what I'd like is if you guys could stay up there, if your parents are here, if you could come up for a picture with your kids on the stage, that would be great.
Yes, also, and I apologize, I forgot, we also have Coach McKinney, who's not just a parent, he's also the coach of the team, so Coach McKinney should be coming up as well.
I have all parents up on the stage for a big...
And we get all the parents up.
We need everybody. This is a, this is a group effort. If the board could get up there, too, that would be great. That's a great picture. All right, congratulations. Thank you, everyone. Thank you to our families for coming tonight, and of course, thank you, Jamie Block, for facilitating this for us this evening, so.
So I'm going to keep going with the president's report, just because we've got a very long slide presentation for y'all tonight, so I know. Those of you staying for the rest of the show don't want to be here all night. So before we get to the more mundane aspects of my president report, I want to just say congratulations to all the students, as they are very understandably walking out. So many of our athletes are standouts in their chosen sport or sports, but the students who joined us tonight have really reached the apex of their pursuits. They've medaled at the New York State level of competition, and to even make it to the state level is incredible. And getting that far and not standing on the podium does not in any way undermine the work, dedication, and skill. I was really, didn't talk to them, but they laughed. They got them to the New York State level of competition. Balancing academics with any extracurricular is challenging. Excelling in that extracurricular while also giving your all at school ups the level of challenge. And excelling in athletics, which can admittedly provide a great outlet, but also a high level of physical exhaustion, while also giving your all at school, is impressive. So as we've done, I want to celebrate all of our athletes generally, but especially those who competed at states, and especially all those champions who came up tonight, which is really incredible. We have two principal appointments on our agenda tonight, and I know that I join many, many others in congratulating Laurel Lynn Stewart and Alyssa Stover on being named principal of 7B and West Orchard, respectively. There are very few announcements that we put out there in this job, where I feel confident that everyone will be happy to read them, but this is one where I know it will be very happily received, and we couldn't be happier for each of you to be appointed as leaders of our buildings. On to less happy news. Unless happy news, as you all saw in our email sent out last week, the governor has threatened to substantially reduce our state foundation aid. Since that announcement, us as the Board of Ed members, Dr. Coe Block and Dr. Ackerman have been working really hard to rectify this. We've been on advocacy Zooms via West Putt, the Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association have met with our local representatives, and Dr. Ackerman recently traveled to Albany to try to fix this. The short, short answer is that we're optimistic, but we can't relax yet. Dr. Ackerman will speak to this further in her report or in the budget presentation, but please, the request we sent in that missive stance, please reach out to the governor's office, as well as your local representatives to Albany, and ask that the whole harmless aid be restored and preserved going forward, so that we're not dealing with this then as an, on an annual problem. We really want it solidified, that not only is it going to be preserved for this upcoming school year, but that this is something that they're going to continue moving forward. The other request in that letter is to ask that we be considered financially similar to the Long Island suburbs, and I want to clarify that request, because if you're not in the weeds on this work, it may not make sense. There is some financial determinations, such as cost of living calculations, that are done by region. We are considered Hudson Valley, as opposed to, I think it's called tri-state that Long Island is put into. Now, all of us who live here know that our costs are much more akin to Long Island and New York City than to most of the Hudson Valley in every way, in terms of what we pay our people to what we pay for milk. So it would be nice for the state ed department to recognize that. So if you're writing anyway to request our aid be concerned, preserved, it's, it's worth a mention. Tonight, we start the more formal budget presentations. We had the preview a number of weeks ago, and now we start the, the in-depth formal presentations. I will reiterate my ask, which is that please watch the presentations before drawing conclusions. We welcome your comments and questions. Please email them to us. We are reading and considering everything that comes in. We will try to address questions that come in at future presentations. And our goal is for everyone to feel like they understand the budget process and the budget itself, and to feel like their questions have been answered. I want to end by saying that to our families observing Ramadan, which begins this weekend, we wish you a meaningful observance, and I hope you have easy fasts, especially as the holiday beginning in tandem with daylight savings time. If any of your students are fasting, and there's something that we can do to support them, please do let us know.
And with that, I'm going to...
Turn it over.
Okay, thank you. Hillary, so I have the opportunity to actually invite Alyssa and Lynn to give some comments tonight before you act on their appointment, but before we do that, I, once we pull up the community update, I'd like Andrew just to discuss a little bit with our community about our process, and then some of our thinking around why this makes sense for our school district, and then we're going to invite Lynn and Alyssa to make a few comments tonight as, as well. So I'm going to turn this over to Andrew, who facilitated our search process for both buildings. So Andrew.
Sure, thank you. I'm happy to talk a little bit about it. It was my pleasure to help steer the committees and the process through that. I thought it was a very strong process. It started with some focus groups for parents and for faculty and teachers at the schools and staff. Really asking, what are you looking for in the next principal of West Orchard? And for Seven Bridges, what are the qualities that you think are most needed? And that was a, it was an incredible experience, actually, to listen to faculty and to parents who were really candid and appreciative of the opportunity. And throughout the process, they kept naming things that sounded very familiar to both Alyssa and Lynn coming up here, and it was a strong correlation. And from that, we went into committee interviews, and I know some of the board were on the committee interviews, where they had, actually, both candidates really had a fairly rigorous process, I think, with a number of questions from constituent groups. It was, every single member of the school community was represented, from students, custodian, clerical, teachers, administrators, administrators in the district Board of Ed members, and parents. And throughout the, the process of the focus groups, the committee interviews, and the debriefs, not only was there an incredibly strong match between the skillset, knowledge, and experience of both Alyssa Stover and Laurel Lynn Stewart, but there was also a strong appreciation for them from people who knew them extremely well in all of these situations. These are two candidates that have spent much of their career, if not almost their entire career, within the school community here in Chappaqua, and have made a mark from day one on their colleagues, and on parents, and on students and administrators at the district, and know their work extremely well.
I'd like to invite up Lynn first, because she seems like she's ready to go, and go ahead, Lynn.
Just because I was on the end. I just want to start off by first saying thank you to the Board of Education for trusting me to lead a building in this really esteemed school district. I've, as mentioned, been able to take on the role of teacher, so really got to live in those shoes, and then assistant principal here at the high school. And not many people get an opportunity to test drive a job before they actually really take it. So I've really found myself very fortunate to have the opportunity to work, continuing to work alongside all of the district administrator and, and building administrators in order to try out Seven Bridges. And with this process, I have fell in love right from the beginning. I think that the middle school years are extremely unique, as we, as we all know. But from day one, I've been overly ecstatic to work with all of the amazing educators and staff members, the parents, my, my PTA is here, and just every step of the way has been such a learning opportunity for me, as I've taken on a learner's approach, but at the same time, been able to really roll up my sleeves and dive in there. And above all is the students. I mean, to stand at the front of the school every morning, and to have students come running in, giving you high fives, asking you the craziest questions, and just being truly excited to be learners in, in a building that's so phenomenal, makes me excited to come to school every day. So I thank you all for giving me the opportunity to continue to lead this building, and I really look forward to all the opportunities that are going to come through the years, as I partner with all of the, the people that make Chappaqua so special. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stewart, and then Ms. Stover.
I have to fix the mic. Lynn's much taller than me. I want to start also by thanking the Board of Education and the district administrators for continuing to trust and invest in my potential and in my leadership here in the district. He's not here tonight, but I also want to thank Jim Scoog. It's bittersweet. I feel like I've come full circle. Jim and I started together at West Orchard 16 years ago, and I will never be able to fill his shoes, but I'm going to make sure that his legacy of making sure that West Orchard was a place where something special happened every day will continue. So thank you, Jim. Go well. That's from him. I shared throughout the process that there is truly a magic that exists within the walls of an elementary school building, and I am so excited to be going home and to experience that each and every day again. And I will be fully committed to making sure that for our students, for our staff, and for our families, that West Orchard is a place that's infused by joy, it's connected by love, and it's a place where we are all committed to making sure that our students have the experiences that will allow them to realize their fullest potential. So thank you all for this incredible opportunity.
Thank you, Alyssa. I couldn't be more thrilled to recommend Lynn and Alyssa to you tonight for your consideration for appointment. I just, there is such an overwhelming amount of confidence when you have members of our team who've been here for such a long period of time and have devoted themselves fully to our district as teachers, as assistant principals, and now as principals. They understand our community, they understand our system. They have a, a layer of professionalism that's really valued here in this district, so I, I'm absolutely thrilled. I also love when administrators have their children go to school here, and I don't think there's a, a larger or a stronger testament to the strength of the district when you have your members of your team enroll their children. And so it's just, it's just thrilling all around to be able to support their appointments to you tonight. So thank you. And thank you for your comments, and I, I, we've got 81 slides to go through, so please don't feel like you need to stay for them, because I, we've got buildings to open up tomorrow. But again, thank you, Lynn, and thank you, Alyssa, and thank you to Alyssa's family, who I believe is here, too, so. And hello to Lynn's family at home. So thank you.
Blair's actually here for me.
Oh, okay, great. All right, well, thank you. So, well done. Okay, so now I'd like Adam to share, we have a scholarship on the agenda from Regeneron, so I just want to highlight our student who allowed us to have this opportunity to receive this grant.
Yeah, so this is Unwin Cow. This is one of our seniors, who is one of the top finalists for the Regeneron Science Competition. This is a nationwide competition. For those of you that don't know, science research is a three-year commitment. Students join, really apply to the program as sophomores, and stay in the program through three years, where they compete in various science competitions. This is a national science competition. She is one of the final 300 scholars that were awarded the Regeneron Prize. It's actually $2,000 to the scholar and $2,000 to the district. So that's a, a nice award. And fun fact, when it comes to Regeneron scholars that I learned, is this group that has been recognized as Regeneron Scholars has gone on to win 13 Nobel Prizes. So we are talking about a pretty serious kind of crop of, of young scientists. I've also learned that Unwin wants to go on and study biochemistry in college. She did her research here on the Epstein-Barr virus, so congratulations to her, and also Dr. Zupan, who is our science research director, as well as our other science teachers. Pretty amazing accomplishment. And we'll make sure she gets a hat, too, and maybe even a medal. $2,000 and a hat.
All right, thank you very much. I'm trying to move. I can't move the... What's happening here? Got me? Okay, well, we got to go back. So Jamie, can you just explain? This is the first time we've had girls' flag football, so can you just share with the board a little bit more about this program?
Yes, so, um, flag football began in New York State. It started in our region three years ago, and it was funded and started by the NFL, the New York Giants. And so it started with seven teams, and that's Daniel Jones, the Giants quarterback. Some people are probably happy to see that, some people aren't, but he came up and actually ran practices and did a lot of the drills with all the student athletes here. So it started with seven. It doubled last year, and now it's doubled again. I think we're about 27 schools in Westchester, in section one that have it. New York State now that's covering at least six sections throughout the state. There's 11 sections. There will be a New York State championship this year in flag football. It is growing in leaps and bounds. I, I think it'll probably be one of the biggest programs in the country in a few years. The Bills are pushing it from the west side, and the Giants from this side. We have a number of student athletes that are, are signed up for it, and will start next week. At this time, there's no JV programs in the section, but I could see that expanding as well. So we're really excited. We had a really nice meeting this morning to kick it off. Coach Valencias, our physical education teacher here at the high school, is going to be coaching, so we're just excited to get started with it.
Thank you, Jamie. And then I just wanted to share with the community some work that's been going on through committee. So the Board of Education has asked the district to review our athletic placement process, to determine if we should expand that at the high school level to our middle school students. And so Jamie and Jamie are co-chairing a committee that's made up of faculty, coaches. Matt and Kaylee are on the committee, and they are looking at two guiding questions. Should we allow seventh and/or eighth grade students to participate in a high school athletic program? And then if we do, what's the criteria for that? And so Jamie, can you just talk in general terms? Some schools do this, some schools don't do this. Historically, our school district has not, but we're going to take a look at this again at the board's request.
And that's what we're doing. We're kind of just reviewing the athletic placement process. About 10 years ago, it was referred to as selection classification. It's not part of the New York State Public High School Athletic Association. It comes from the commissioner's regulations, actually. And what it is, is allowing middle schoolers to play up on high school teams, be it JV or varsity. There is a standard procedure that they have to go through. There's about seven steps that you must follow. You cannot alter them at all. A school district does not have to do it. You can participate in it. You can also choose if you want to participate. You can put certain restrictions. You can say, no seventh graders, no to this sport, only eighth graders, or you can do what you want. But then you must follow the standard policy. It starts with parent permission, medical clearance, there's a physical fitness portion to it. There's clearance from student, from guidance counselors, from classrooms, make sure students can handle it emotionally and socially as well, because now they're playing at a different grade level against older students, and they're, they're around definitely a different group of social circles. So it's something that we're just looking at and looking at what other school districts are doing, and we'll make a decision what's best for Chappaqua.
I just also want to just be clear about expectations. We have to think about this very deeply before we make any adjustments, because there's there's, there's impact on middle school kids, and there's high impact on high school kids if we do this. So this is going to be a process that's going to be thought out carefully from our, our internal team, which includes a parent representative from Sports Boosters. And then the goal would be to make a recommendation in June on how to move forward, which could be keep everything the way that it is, or something else. But this will be a process that we need to make sure that we vet out thoroughly because of the impact on the high school program and the impact on our middle school kids. So I didn't know if Kaylee or Matt, if you wanted to share anything, since you're on the, on the committee. But you don't have to, I'm just...
Yeah, I mean, I had, I have a foundational initial opinion on this. This is not something that I had been exposed to in my youth athletic career as long ago as that was. But I, I think we had a really nice discussion, and I'm looking forward to our next meeting next week. And it's, you know, some people put athletics in, not that serious. To Christine's point, this has a lot of impact on the seventh and eighth graders, but also a lot of unintended consequences to the older kids as well. So I think this is something that we're going to really think through, and I think the committee is made up of people who just really just want the right things for our kids. So I'm looking forward to our next discussion.
Thank you, and thank you, Jamie, for being here tonight. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Jamie.
Okay, so then the last thing I want to share is, we got a little bit of an issue on April 8. So we have a solar eclipse happening, and it's going to take place right when the elementary buses are leaving. And so there's like a, there's a concern about students looking at the eclipse without the appropriate safety goggles, glasses on, to protect their eyes. And so what, what I'm going to suggest, and again, I, feedback is important, is that on this day, we dismiss an hour early, so everyone can be home with their families. And I'll keep the spaces open, the facilities open, if we want to have events here, where kids can be together watching this eclipse under the supervision of their parents, because of like the nuances associated with having to view this in a way that kids have the appropriate eye protection. I also don't want our elementary students on the bus when this is happening. I feel like they got to be off the bus. We can't extend the day because of the way that our contracts work. So I'm going to, I am going to suggest that we dismiss an hour early. And then what that would mean is that the next meeting, we'd be adjusting the calendar. I would be asking you to act on it, and then I would send out a notification to our parents, just so they understand. Now, if we do dismiss an hour early, healthy kids, CCW, that'll all run. That's not going to be a problem for us. So I, I don't want people to be concerned if they use our district for daycare that that's not going to be open. We'll have that open for families. But I, I do think we need to do this because of the dynamics associated with this happening right in the middle of the elementary bus run. Any, any concerns about that?
And just so that families understand that April 8 is the Monday following our spring break, right? So that, you know, if you need to plan accordingly.
I also anticipate that some families aren't going to come to school that day, because they're going to go and watch it, which I think is great, too, right? Because these are like once-in-a-lifetime opportunities, so people should choose to do that if they, if they want to, and and that's fine, and, and that's totally understandable. I just want to make sure that we have a pathway for kids to be safe, and also to experience this if their families choose to engage in that activity with their students in a way that families feel is safe. It's really about that elementary bus run happening at the time of it, so.
And to clarify, you're dismissing everyone an hour early.
Yes, because everyone has to go an hour early, so the buses can...
Not just the elementary schools, but all the schools.
Okay. All right, so that is the end of the superintendent's update. These are just the highlight of the activities coming up. We've got Little Mermaid this weekend. I know we have some board members' children a part of that, which should be great. And then next week, we start kindergarten registration, which is also exciting. And we're meeting every Wednesday in March, so, you know, we'll keep talking about things happening in the community, but we'll be here next week as well to go over some more details in terms of the budget. And tomorrow, we have meet the coaches' night here, Greeley. All right. So, now Josh and I are going to go through a pretty significant budget presentation. And while it has the same structure that we've used in the past, because of what we're proposing, we have, after our budget presentation, some slides to support the budget that we'll be sharing with you this evening. And so, we're going to move through this as quickly as possible. So, just let me know when you're ready. Sure. Yeah, that's great. I would like you to wait till the end, if that's okay. And then one of the strategies that we've been using is for some... If you would like more detail, then we'll present them in the next meeting, and I'll show the community how we structured that today, which I think is really helpful. So, our budget proposal is an increase of about $4 million or 2.94%, which is when you see that our budget in the next few slides is over our levy limit, which is the first time we've done that since that's been in existence. And I'm going to talk about why we're proposing a budget in that way throughout this presentation. But I also, I wanted to start by saying, we're going to operate under the assumption that our state aid is going to be restored. I am pretty confident that that's going to happen. But I also know that that may not happen by the end of the month, so that may have to push out our budget calendar, because we really can't... I can't propose a budget for your adoption consideration until that's like done. Normally, we don't have a cut like this, so we can move forward without them finalizing it. But this year, we need to wait for them to finalize their budget. So, we are shy about $800,000, but we don't anticipate that that will come to fruition. Okay? And so, our budget calendar is almost the same every year, where we begin the conversations in the fall and then in December. And through February, we really work on this with the administrative team to make sure that we have the right numbers and the number of staff that we feel like we need to be able to support the program. On the first, we have enough information to certify our property tax cap. And then we begin our budget work sessions. And the budget's not final until it's final, right? So, this is like a... We're sharing with you a proposal of what we think we need to do, but we can make adjustments along the way. And of course, we're going to absolutely need to make an adjustment if we don't have our state aid restored by New York State. And then in April and May is when we start to like push out what the budget is. And then we have our vote, and that's on May 21st this year. And so, our budget is rooted in three questions: making sure that we're continuing the excellence in our program academically, socially, emotionally, and extracurricularly in a fiscally responsible way, that we're creating a program where students think deeply, creatively, apply problem-solving skills, work collaboratively, actively participate in their learning in our classes. And then we have a third question that focuses on social-emotional learning in that we're working with our students to develop children who are ethical, empathetic, respectful, and prepared to be strong global citizens in the world as they leave the district. And then we have five priorities that we're working on, and this is all online. But we're working on improving students' sense of belonging. We're always looking to revolve our curriculum, evolve it beyond like the traditional experiences that have taken place in classrooms across the country. And we're spending a lot of time looking at our middle school experience. You won't see a lot of shifts in this presentation about that, because right now, we're in a study process to determine if we should make some adjustments to our building structure in the future. So, we're going to engage in a study around that next year. We are always thinking about having the best people in front of our students in our classrooms and how to do that, and also to expand our ability for our faculty to do their jobs in the most progressive way possible, and then to like improve our systems. And then also thinking about are there different ways we can generate revenue moving forward. And so, in our budgeting this year, these are the things that are like drive the process. Students are at the center of all decisions. We make sure that we preserve and expand our academic and social-emotional programs. Now, that doesn't mean that we don't evolve our programs, but it makes sure that they continue to be in place moving forward and that we're not cutting classes or cutting the needs of our students instructionally. We always are revisiting our class size over the summer because we have enrollment shifts that happen, and we make adjustments as necessary. So, even though we're presenting something today, in July, we might need to make sure that we have enough space to be able to add if we need to. If certain students' profiles come into the district, or we have an influx of students that come in. So, there's got to be enough flexibility to do that. We always are thinking about our buildings and what our infrastructure needs are about our strategic plan. And then our budget this year really responds to a lot of the community feedback that we've received, particularly around SROs and class size. And so, there are four main pockets of the budget that takes up most of the funding. So, it's our programs, and that's our staff. It's our sectioning around class size. It's our building needs, and then it's our obligations in terms of our contracts, which we almost have all settled. And we should come to a conclusion by the end of the budgeting process. And so, like our operating standards are making sure that our enrollment and our courses support small group instruction, individualized learning. We expand our program offerings to align with our strategic initiatives, that our spaces continue to evolve, that our building schedules are maximized so we can optimize the use of our professional staff, that we maintain the integrity of our physical plant, that we support our extracurricular programs, that we offer a wide range of professional learning opportunities, that we meet our contracts, and that we improve our communication structures for our community. So, now I'm going to... And I just want to remind our families before we turn it over to... I turn it over to Josh to talk about the financials. Our students do very well in this district because of the support that our community affords us. So, you'll see in our chart, our scores are always at the high end of the state. That blue line is how we compare against all other districts across the state in our percentile rank, and that's math. This is ELA. It's very, very high. We're always scoring in the top percentage. And then if you look at our SAT and our ACT scores and our AP scores, they're very high. So, our students do very well here across the context of our program. So, we need to think about that as we're budgeting to make sure that we provide the support that we can continue high achievement for our students as we move forward in the next school year. Okay. So, Josh?
Great. So, we're going to go through a whole bunch of numbers and go through all the impact and the variables that affect our budget. So, this slide shows us that over the years, our budget has been steadily increasing as it does over time. And you could see as last year, here, we had a 3.23% increase. This year's budget is proposing a 2.94% increase of the budget. And we'll discuss the issues of why the tax levy is at 3.94% as opposed to last year's 2.11% as we go through the presentation. So, percentage-wise, you could see that we have always hovered around below that 3% mark, right? So, our budget-to-budget increases and our levy increases have really been very reasonable, very respectful, very thoughtful about how we propose a budget, and always within the limits of between that 0 and 4% mark predominantly. And all of those were within the levy limit over the course of time. If we look at our expenditures and our revenues, starting to compare the previous years, the first thing to think about our approved budget for this 23-24 year and the proposed budget. Our salaries, you see that there is a really low increase. A lot of that is driven by retirements that happened after the budget process last year and retirements that we had before the budget process this year that are already known to us. You see a large increase in benefits. Those retirements all shift over into benefits along with the increases in benefits. And there is about a 2% increase in both TRS and ERS in the coming school year. The O&M large increase is due to the additional five SRO officers. So, not that that budget is increasing, but that's where those are. So, the overall increase is, again, 2.94%, which is less than last year's increase of 3.2%. And looking here, predominantly 70.9% of our budget is made up of salaries and benefits, leaving us the 29.1% for things like per pupil expenditures, our BOSI services, our transportation. So, a lot of things are tied into our contracts, are tied into people, right? And teaching staff are a large part of that. Even with inflation, we're managing to keep our per pupil expenditure only is raising by $24.40 per student next year. So, I want to talk about what the budgeted revenues from last year versus the expected revenues. I think that's an important piece for us to discuss. So, last year, we budgeted 9.62% less in state aid than we're actually receiving this year. A lot of that is due to that we budgeted based on the governor's proposal. There is additional building aid that we're receiving this year, and there's additional expense-based aid. So, we expensed things last year through BOSI services that we're receiving aid back on this year. So, that is part of that. We are a little bit under where we anticipated the sales tax to be. So, go out and buy in Westchester. And our use of money and our interests, we budgeted for, and that sort of stayed stagnant. I think we were expecting a little bit of an increase in that. But all in all, we are up about 0.64% on our revenues than we were expecting to receive in our budget cycle from last year. Thinking about how now that budgeted from last year to the proposed this year, we've already talked a little bit about our property taxes. From the budgeted to the state aid that we're going to receive, we're seeing an increase of 7.5%. Again, right? That's from budgeted to budgeted, not from what we're receiving to budgeted. I think that's important to note. The decrease in appropriating $2 million from fund balance instead of a 3.5 million. And then the decrease in the use of money and property is that we are expecting, at this moment, every information we're receiving is that interest rates are going to be either staying the same or decreasing. And we want to start to phase that into our budget rather than seeing that as a loss. As next year, what we're expecting to have versus what we're budgeting to have. And then also, with our capital bond project, we have a lot of network equipment that actually has value that we're going to sell back. So, there's a little bit of increase in that. I want to talk about our state aid. So, this, I know there's a few different columns here, but I want to make sure that we understand that there's a difference between what the governor's proposal is and what we're actually budgeting. And Christine talked about there's about an $800,000 difference. So, we are budgeting for the restoration of that state aid, even though right now, we don't have that on paper. We're waiting the legislature to have that. We do anticipate a slight dip in building aid for next year, because we had building aid fall off, and the state has delayed. It has been not as quick to approve our projects. So, our hope is to get all of that done, and then halfway through next year, get projects finished so that we get the half a year aid. But we can't budget for that right now. So, that is because we don't know to expect those to complete. And again, the BOSIs, we had some expenditure-driven aid that we don't anticipate having next year. So, all in all, from budgeted to budgeted, we see a little bit of a decrease in the state aid that we are expecting to receive. A lot of that decrease is driven by expense-based aid and building aid. So, again, this is also, I think the illustration in this is that a lot of Chappaqua's budget is made up of the property taxes, right? Our state aid or other pieces, our small components of it, but a large part of it is the tax base that we have. The next portion I want to talk about is fund balance. So, fund balance is basically our savings account that we should keep for a rainy day. If something breaks, like a roof, we have a problem with a roof, we have reserves for if TRS or EFRS go up significantly, if our interest, if our insurance goes up significantly, we have a way not to impact the budget on that. We have reserves for that. Our reserves, we're only going back to 2014, but have gone down significantly over the years. And you want to keep an unassigned fund balance at exactly 4%. That's sort of our goal every year, is to keep it at that. And you also, a healthy reserve would be about 20% of the expenditure budget. So, you could see our current reserves, right? This is from the controller's audit from last year of the state is at 13.6%. And if you compare that with the medium schools in our region, in the Mid-Hudson, that's significantly lower, right? And I know you can't read that slide there, but our fund balance compared to our peer districts in Westchester and Putnam is third from the bottom. So, we really need to be thinking about restoring our reserves and rebuilding back our fund balance.
So, I'd like to share one of the outcomes of us not receiving any federal aid when we had the COVID crisis is directly illustrated in this, in this chart.
Meaning that you used fund balance in the place of not getting COVID aid, just to be clear?
Yes. And the federal government replenished the districts, but did not ours because of our...
Yeah. And that's really well illustrated. If you look at the two years for 2020-21 and 21-22, where expenditures exceeded our revenues, a big portion of that was because we didn't receive COVID federal funds as other school districts did, and we opened school, we kept school open, and utilized funds for that. I do want to say, as we start to look towards the future, right, that this 22-23 budget shows the expenditures about 4% difference, right? And you want to see that slight gap between your expenditures and your revenues all through, so that because as our budget is increasing, to maintain a 20% fund balance, you have to add a little bit to it each year, right? So, we want to start to build the budgets moving forward that have that little gap between revenues and expenditures, so that the revenues are always slightly higher than our expenditures. And then in years that we need to use that, that's when we start to move things around so that we have that fund balance available to us. Our capital project expenditures, so in 22-23, we had significant debt fall off. In 23-24, the debt fell off. In 22-23, we approved the capital bond project to make up for that debt. While we were waiting to finance that debt, we were able to use $2.25 million to then transfer to Capital View projects that were outside of our capital bond project. This past year, we did a bond anticipation note where we have some interest that we need to pay on that. But because, again, because of the delayed projects and because of the way we were able to finance, we still have a gap of about $1.8 million. And we want to use that capital to do things like continue to renovate bathrooms, do additional paving that needs to be done, and invest in our safety and security. That really, if we would drop that off, that would really affect what our tax cap can be, and we want to keep that flat. The other thing I want to make sure that I note is that we have not used any monies in our tax levy increase for the capital bond project that has happened so far. So, while the voters voted on that, there was a slight increase in the revenues from the tax base. We haven't levied that yet because of the projects. We've been able to keep that neutral throughout.
And just for a point of clarification, those projects are stuck up at state aid right now for approval. So, it's not a lack of effort on our part. We're just waiting for them to turn projects around, and they are completely backed up, which they shared with us on Tuesday in a meeting that I attended.
So, another piece of why we want to continue to create healthy fund balances is our bond rating. So, while when we went out to our band, Moody's rated us AAA, there are signs that we need to bring that back up to make sure that we keep it at AAA, so that when we go out and get the interest on our bands and our bonds, they're at the lowest rates possible. If they're not, that's going to start costing us money within our budget, and we're going to have more debt service that we're going to have to take care of. So, we do anticipate taking out another band for next year and then bonding the following year. We want to take these short-term loans out because we want to wait for interest rates to fall before we take out a big bond note that we pay off over multiple years. Okay. Then property tax cap. So, a little math lesson of how the property tax cap works is when the state has us create our property tax cap that we file with the controller's office every year, the way we calculate that is we take the prior year's tax levy, we multiply it by a tax base growth factor. So, that is a number given us by the state of how much the Chappaqua School District has grown in its tax base over the past, the previous year. This year, the number that they gave us was 1.0000. They go out to 4.00. They go out to four decimal places, showing that there was no growth in the tax base over the year. So we can't add anything to our tax levy within the, within the tax cap for growth next year. Then we add on a bunch of things, our capital expenses, our debt service and any pension exemptions that we have. We subtract off the building aid that we get, and then we get the starting point for the coming year. We then multiply that number by the tax levy growth factor, which is the lower of CPI or 2%. This year it's 2% because CPI is above that. Again, add in our capital expenditures, subtract out our building aid. And that gave us for this year a tax cap of 1.81%. And just for some comparison, on the next slide. So we, our 1.81 tax cap for this year is the lowest that it's ever been, right? So generally, on average, we've had 2.1 year. And when I say that, I mean, within our growth factor, the years of the CPI has been lower, but because of that growth factor, it, it has lowered that down. So it's not the lowest tax cap, but it's the lowest via the growth factor. But on average, we've had about 2.1% has been our tax cap. So our levy growth that they allow us to have is about 2.1 million dollars. This budget is proposing us to be about 4.7 million dollars. Here is just, this will get posted online. If you want to see the whole formula and the whole spreadsheet and how that works, you can read that, but it has all the numbers of everything that was just described. So when we were building the budget, we looked at that tax cap and we built a budget that is within that tax cap. That was the first thing that we did. And the way we did that is we looked at our some anticipated savings that we could have. One is we are participating in a market that looks at analytics around fuel costs and electric costs and alters where we purchase our utilities from based upon those costs. I've been looking at some bulk purchasing. So for instance, print, printer and toner is bought at the buildings. Our purchasing agent and myself have looked to see if we buy that in bulk. Can we save some funds? And it turns out that we can. So we're looking at some contracts that can do some bulk purchasing for us. Our tech services contract is up at the end of the year. And Andrew, our tech director, myself, over the past five years have been working to have our tech services company be available and aidable via BOSIs. And it looks like that we are able to make that happen. So that gets about 30% aid back on our tech services that we were never able to receive. And then we have also renegotiated our HVAC contract, which actually is a huge savings for us. I previously talked about, we have a significant number of retirements between last year post budget and this year pre-budget proposal. And all of that has had significant savings on our budget. Some anticipated additions within the tax levy are that we added two school resource officers this year. Those were not budgeted for last year, so we're budgeting for them this year. We have one additional special education teacher that we're adding to the budget. That's being offset by some savings in special ed. Our insurance increases. Our insurance premium is going up by 20% next year with our insurance carrier. And that number, we're in a consortium and that number is given to us and there, that is essentially the number as much as we've been fighting for them that, that we have to work with. TRS and EFRS, we talked about is going an additional 2% next year. And paying retiree benefits, their health benefits is a significant cost. So those are the anticipated additions to the budget and then continuing our contractual obligations, working through our strategic plan, our having extremely high quality curriculum and technology and our safety and security. So after we built the levy limit budget, we put exactly three things into the budget that bring it over the limit. The first is a revenue based increase, which is having a $2 million reliance on fund balance for next year rather than the 3.5 million that was in the previous year. And then there are two expense base additions of three additional SROs and then three additional elementary school classroom teachers to reduce class size. And I just wanted to show some other scenario, tax cap type scenarios where our current increase is 3.94%, our allowable is 1.81%. If the foundation aid is not restored and we added that into our tax levy, it would be 4.61%. And I thought as an exercise, I would think about what would it have looked like if our 3.95% increase was within the levy limit? And that would have required us to have a 1.021 growth factor of the assessments of the town. And I put the last five years there to show that our highest was 1.062. There are towns in Westchester, you could, that's okay. There are towns in Westchester such as Arslay, Tarrytown, that actually have growth factors that are above the 1.021% number. So, so it is possible that with some growth in, in construction that has been happening and some growth in other areas that we can get to that point in, in the future. So I just wanted to illustrate that for everybody.
So now I'm going to talk about our enrollment projections and sections. So you can see, we share this slide every year. We have projections all the way out to 20, 26, 27. And this helps us budget for our kindergarten classes. And then I also want to share with you our district threshold. So this is negotiated between the teachers association, the administration and approved by the board. So we have max thresholds of 20 students in kindergarten, 23 students in first grade, 25 students in grades two through four, and then 28 students in grades five through 12. But we did hear feedback, pretty significant feedback. And I will talk about that after we're done presenting the budget fully from our families at the elementary level in grades two through four, that they felt the class sizes were too high. And we've heard that consistency consistently over the course of many years. So we are presenting a budget which addresses that. And you can see here through our sectioning and our class sizes at, at the two through four level that they are not near 25. They are, they're hovering between 18 and 21. So this budget attempts to address those concerns that have been brought up repeatedly to the Board of Education and to the administration and through some of the surveying that we did during the strategic plan process. So this is a budget that includes 67 sections at the elementary level, specifically addressing the concerns and reducing class size in grades two through four. And then you can see in terms of our middle school, what our sectionings look like next year. They're all between like 20 and, and 23. And then our high school sectionings are very different based on the classes that kids are taking because an enrollment fluctuated based on the nuances of our elective courses. But you can see that they're in line with the, with the class line guidelines as well. So those are what our projected sections look like. And so just in terms of a budget summary, until we get into some real backup information here, we are proposing an increase to the budget of about $4 million or 2.94% with the assumption that our state aid will be restored and, and that we feel like this budget responds to the strategic questions meets our operating standards. Is it, make sure we're providing a program that's safe for our students and, and supports professional learning for our faculty, which is so important. Allocates one SRO per building, which is also feedback we've heard, which I'm going to share with you in a minute as well. Commits to lowering our class sizes at our elementary schools based on feedbacks that we've heard from our families and reduces the concerns we have about using fund balance to balance our budget moving forward. And so Josh, can you just talk a little bit about because we are presenting a budget that is an override, there's a different formula that we need to follow in order to have the budget approved?
Right, so if exactly 60% or more approve the budget, then the budget's approved. If less than 60% approve the budget, there are two choices. One is that the board can propose a new budget and there's a new budget vote that happens in June. And there are some considerations that the board can make for that. Or the board can adopt immediately a contingency budget. A contingency budget has restrictions on it. The first is that there can be a 0% tax levy increase. And there are specific line items within the budget that can't increase and need to be reduced in order to make up for increases in the line items that are allowed to increase, mostly based upon contractual obligations.
So if we move forward with the override budget, it's a 60% approval and not the normal like 50% approval process. So I just want everyone to understand that. And then in terms of our Board of Education, we have one seat up. We have a, we, for a third year term. And if people are interested in running for the board, we have a due date of April 22nd to turn in your petition. So if you are interested in running and you want to understand more about that, please contact Lisa. You can send her an email or give her a call and come on in and we'll help you through the process. And we can talk to you a little bit about that as you, as you think about whether or not it's something you'd like to consider being a part of. And there's certain qualifications that you need to meet and those are posted. So you can certainly review that or we can talk that through with you as well. And so we've had to make an adjustment to the budget calendar because of this New York State government. So we're going to continue with our, our process here. So we're going to be presenting next week and the following week on these different components of the budget. We are going to have our PCA budget forum, but we may not present a budget for the board's adoption consideration on the 27th because we might not be ready because they may not, this state, the governor's budget may not be adopted yet. So we're, it's kind of like in a holding pattern. If it doesn't hit their, if they don't hit the deadline, then we'll have to schedule another meeting. So we just have to all be understanding of that because we aren't going to move forward until we know whether or not that aid is restored. And then we have our, but these other meetings will take place as scheduled. Like the eighth is the budget hearing and the Chappaqua library presentation. And then the 21st is the vote. So the government needs to adopt that budget so we can meet the other deadlines in here. So they have some room though, between like the end of March and April if they need it. Okay, so now here's some specific information prepared for the board based on some feedback they've already received. And additional like clarity that we think is helpful so people understand why we're presenting what we are. So the first thing I, I'm going to talk about is the elementary class size reduction. So we had a thought exchange to create our strategic plan. And we had a lot of parents participate in that. And the number, one of the number one rated thoughts that required deep consideration centered on class size, right? And so like parents continued to mention that they felt like this is a concern that we needed to take seriously. And their thoughts focused on increasing outcomes for students, individual instruction and just overall general achievement related to smaller classes. And so because of that and because of our enrollment, we looked at if we didn't make those adjustments in this budget and we stayed at the levy, what would class sizes look like? So this is what 62 sections budgeted. So this is no teachers added to the budget to reduce class size. And so you can see now that the class sizes are between two through four, between like 20 and, and 25. And it varies by building and by grade level. So the, the budget proposed has a more even class size allocation than the budget that would be at the levy limit. So that's one of the thoughts around how do we move forward in a way that really responds to the feedback that we're receiving? So this is just so people could understand what the class sections would look like if we were proposing a budget within the levy limit. And so this, I just want to go back to like, this is what it looks like in this current budget with, with 67 sections. So you might be like, well, 52, 67, that's five. You're only asking for three additional faculty. That's because we're able to move faculty down from the middle schools based on sectioning up there. So that's how we get to only meeting three. All right, so now I want to talk about the school resource officer. So just, these are a bunch of slides. I'm going to go through this very quickly because this is not new information and all this can be found online. So you know that we've done a survey three years and we've contracted with a company to give us data on school safety, right? And so I'm going to go to 2022. So we did a, a survey of our staff, our faculty and our community members with J and JJN. And this is online if you, if, or you can call us and I can go over this with you if you, if you want more information. And this was done in October. And what we found was that people felt, and this is in our numbers of people that responded to the survey, which are pretty high, even though like, like you might not think 70, 17% as high, but it actually is, right? In terms of statistical analysis. And so we had half, over half our staff and 67% of the students can really give us some feedback on some of the changes that we made based off of the first survey. And what we found that people felt like really good about the safety changes that we had undergone as a district. And we're feeling better about just being safe in our buildings. But we also learned from this that we had asked a question about armed personnel and we didn't really get a favorable response on that at, at the time, at the time. And so we took that under consideration as we planned forward. And then we also know that our families and our, in our, in our faculty primarily were telling us that, well, they felt good about things that we were doing. They felt more could be done, but we really couldn't tease out what that was. And Jane and JJN shared that with us. And so then in March of 2023, we had some public comment here and meetings where parents were coming up very, very concerned and really advocating for an SRO per building. But I, I felt like I needed to understand a little bit better where that was coming from. So I had a whole bunch of focus groups that people, anyone could participate in. Anyone who wanted to be a part of it, they were in it. And based on those focus groups and the board observed those and I ran them. We, we thought that we needed to ask the question again around school safety, but specifically around police or armed security or building and really bifurcate that to get more specific feedback. And so in May, 2023, we, we asked another survey. And we sent this to only our, our faculty and our parents because we felt like we had an SRO here really already. So we didn't need to ask our kids about that. And I sent this out all over the place. It went home in writing. We had a survey opportunity at the budget vote where people could log on. We sent it out multiple times over email and we provided an opportunity for staff to, to complete it during their workday. And so I want to share that with you because I, I feel like it's really important that everyone know that we, everyone in this community had access to this information and the ability to take this survey. Okay, so now I just want to focus on the, the, the community results. And I, I want to share with you that in terms of this survey, we had 14% of the community take it. But we shared it and was, it was sent to many more people because of the way that we did it. So the response rate was still pretty strong and it was more people that took it the first time. And then we had almost half of our faculty take it. And what we saw in these results, and this is just the breakdown of who, who took the survey. So if you want to look at this in more detail when we post the presentation online tomorrow, you can. But you can see it like we're, how parents like were categorized in this. And what we saw in the survey specifically is that people were now feeling, even though they reported in, in, in the fall, they were feeling a certain way. Now they were feeling less safe in our buildings. And there was some strong support for having a school resource officer indicated in this survey for each building by both our parents and our faculty. But this was after the budget was done and we couldn't, of course, afford to, at that point, to reallocate funding in a way that would increase our SROs to have one assigned to each building. So we did move forward with a plan where we had a shared resource officer for the middle and elementary level, which has worked out fine for us, right? But now based on that community feedback, we're in a position where we can respond to that. And so we are in a position where we are proposing that we add a resource officer to the budget based on the community feedback we received. So that each building moving forward has their own resource officer allocated to it. So that is why that is included in your, your, this budget proposal this evening. And it's grounded in that data, in the focus groups and in the survey that everyone in this community had the opportunity to participate in and whether they chose to or not. You know, I, I can't make a judgment on that, but that's why we're here in this moment and we're, we're presenting that to you for your consideration. I also know that sometimes people are like, well, what you need to, you don't have to, to add, where can you cut? And so often people go to like the administrators. So we thought it would be important to share with you like the, our administrative budget and, and our numbers so that everyone had the same information. Because I don't think that sometimes people understand what they're asking when they, or, or the suggestions that they're making fully when they bring those forward for consideration. So Josh, can you talk a little bit about this? And we have a few slides that.
So, so of our total staff in the district of 588, I mean, almost 70% are teaching staff. So, so of our total staff in the district of 588, I mean, almost 70% are teaching staff. I think the other thing to note in there, our clerical staff is 85, but that also includes our teacher aides that are in our kindergarten classrooms are in that and only 4.5% or 26 employees are administrators in our school district. So how that compares to other school districts in the state, it is right at the average of the state. So this is the ratio, the number of, the number of students per administrator that are in our school district is 147.42, which is in our PNW BOCES area is exactly right at the average. For New York State, it's a little below the average and for just Westchester, it's above the average. You know, of course, the question is like, well, what are the costs of all of this? And if you go to the next slide, our cost percent of administrative cost per pupil is 12%, right? That's actually dollars. This comes from the same transparency report that comes out from the state each year via ESSA. New York State, it's approximately 13%. Westchester's 13%. And then our PNW BOCES neighbors is 14%. And then our cost per pupil of administrative costs is $3,787 and which is a little bit below, right? I think you could see that we shifted up a little bit. We're above the New York State average there, but we're below the average for both Westchester and PNW BOCES.
So that, thank you, Josh. So then the next thing that we often hear is, well, you should start to make some adjustments to your professional development team. And I'm going to talk about like what that looks like and what that sounds like. So first of all, we have a professional development team to support our faculty, particularly our non-tenure faculty. And they, and they, they organize our curriculum. They do, they are involved in coaching, professional learning. They provide technology support, their liaisons between the school and the district. And they research and they lead district improvement initiatives and they support our principals and our assistant principals. And they are subject-specific or area-focused, right? So we have 89 probationary teachers and we have faculty who've been a part of our district who are master teachers in science, math, ELA, social studies, technology, who go in and support all of our faculty, particularly our non-tenured staff with instruction. And that's part of the model that really works for us. So that when you, your child has a teacher, whether they're a new teacher or they're experienced teacher, there's a liaison to support that work that takes place in the classroom and a variety, and in a variety of other work that takes place throughout the district. And it also helps us align our curriculum. And then we also have three positions that are grounded in supporting student belonging. And so what, what people will often say, and we heard this a little bit last year, is that, well, you don't need those positions. Those are the positions you should cut. But I also want to remind everyone, we did a lot of work last year around how to appropriately respond to our students who were telling us that, that we needed to do work on making sure that all students felt like they belonged here and valued for who they are. And so we continue to do surveying of our kids and they continue to tell us that this is a real need for them. And so Andrew engaged in a process where he gathered information last year from students, from staff and from our, our family members about like, how do we support this work? How do we support our kids? And how do we support our families moving forward? This is an extensive process and how the outcome of this was adding or reconfiguring an administrative position and adding three professionals who are teachers that could support work inside the classroom and could support work with our families throughout the district on a social emotional level. So this is included in the budget. So I, I want to be very clear about that because sometimes what happens when we're budgeting is that people have their own interests, but they can't see the interests of everyone at the same time. So yes, we have support for SROs from a, a, a population of parents. Yes, we have support for smaller class size. Yes, we have support for some real strong work around community culture and belonging, which by the way, is grounded in student needs that they keep demonstrating year after year in our survey data. So to like, so I just want everyone to understand that all of our positions that we currently have in this budget are important. And I want people to be thinking about that as they're instructing what they feel like we need to hear about how to move forward here in terms of how to support this community, but particularly what our kids need. And so the last thing I want to just share with you is some advocacy that we've been doing because we, we feel like it's important because of our position that we continue to be involved with our state legislators to, to, to reshape some of how this works so that we're in a position that we can budget appropriately. And so you got a letter that we sent out asking for some more language to exempt security personnel from, from, from the levy limit calculation. We have sent a, a letter directly from Josh to our legislators about the budget cut. And then Josh has met with all these people. And now we've sent this out to you for your consideration through the board to advocate on our behalf. So we continue to advocate for our district and funding to, to the state through the appropriate avenues because we know that that's important to this community. And so at this point, we'd like any questions from the board. And then I'd also like to share, I think our strategy of preparing information for the next meeting in the same format we've done here is, is probably a helpful one. And so if there's information you want us to prepare for next meeting as like an add-on to the end, we'll, we'll certainly do that as well. So go ahead.
I'll jump in. Thank you so much for all this information and for already answering a lot of the questions that I think a lot of people in the audience probably had and a lot of us on the board have, have asked of you before. So thank you so much for already putting up so many slides and doing so much work in, in advance. Josh, when you talked about the revenue plan and ideas for bringing in more revenue, can you talk a little bit about that, about where some of that will come from?
Right. So, so right, predominantly our revenue comes from our, our tax levy. So one of the things that we're starting to think about is how do we find other forms of revenue, right? Like this is part of the strategic plan. Where are places that we can save money? One thing that Mary is going to talk about in a few weeks is we're bought our first electric vehicle so that we can start saving on fuel expenses, right? That's coming in a couple of weeks. And so how can we reduce our reliance on fuel in our buildings? And also considering as our next energy performance contract comes to you, how do we think about sustainability that actually brings in revenue that doesn't just cost us money? So like, those are one area. There are definitely other areas where we're trying to explore some revenue options in the district. And I think as we get through further through the process of the strategic plan, we're going to come up with lots of ideas. We want to solicit input from everybody to think about that because we do want to make sure that we're bringing in other forms of sustainable revenue into the school district for whether it's, whether it's using our property in different ways, whether it's like just lots of different ways so that the reliance of our revenue is not on, fully on the tax base.
And then use that revenue to increase the fund balance or?
So both to increase the fund balance and decrease the tax levy portion of the budget.
Great. And then one other question. When you all talked about the savings portion of the budget, you talked about the retirement of a lot of teachers over the last year. And I know that we, that you mentioned Dr. Ackerman about the different section sizes and how you're moving some teachers down from the middle school to the elementary to make up the difference there. But in general, when teachers retire, we replace those teachers. Is the theory being that those teachers have a lower salary than the teachers who retired because they?
Yeah, correct. So, so after those teachers retire, we look at our salary scales and we think about where have the teachers who we've been hiring been? And then we put that into the budget as opposed to the teacher who has been here for 20 plus years and is higher on the salary scale.
Great. Thank you so much.
Wait, so can I ask, piggyback off of, Alyssa, so do we have, are we setting a cap for the retirees replacement? Do we have something like that in our district?
So we set a budget, right? So every individual gets that budget on there. And then there's the pool of that we in there. So as we look into our hiring season, we start to look at our budget, right? So we probably won't look at each individual hire, right? But we do look at how do we take someone who has 30 years of experience and is much higher on the salary scale when we look to hire people, right? We're not looking at that high on the salary scale. We could start to average that out and have considerable savings within salaries. That's the goal.
Also, one of the things that we think about in terms of our hiring is that in order to access the insurance benefits, you have to be here for 15 years. So that impacts the applicants to apply for certain jobs in our district. So that enables us to gauge probably where they would be coming in because they won't be at the top end of the salary scale.
Right. So it would be increased in health insurance but decreased in salary.
Correct.
Okay.
Josh, I think this would just be instructive. I think because a lot of, when you propose an override budget, I think a lot of the communication we get is it's sort of a cop out, it's a little lazy. But like with the inflationary backdrop that we have, can you just walk us through like, we obviously are keeping our per pupil dollar figure basically in line. Can you sort of walk us through how we creatively do that just to show that we're not just proposing an override budget that's not, you know, all encompassing and trying to, to go through every avenue to sort of stay within the confines?
Yeah. And I think that's been very important this year, right? So when we look at our budget, right? We said 70.9% is essentially contractual. But we went through every single department and started to look at, okay, I know that, you know, paper has been costing more money, right? So is there a way we could start to look at ways that we could cut back on both utilizing paper and find a, a way to purchase paper from a different place than we've normally done it that might be cheaper? I mean, we have gone through, everything is costing more, right? We're looking at 15 to 20% more for lots, for whiteboard markers. So we start to, to look at each, we've looked at each piece of that in each department to say, how can we start to just think about those costs? Think about what our needs are? Think about what we don't need, right? And think about places that we could purchase those things that would be less expensive. I think this year more than ever, we had to do that essentially line by line in order to keep our inflationary costs down within our district. It's been really important. And I think the other driver is starting to look at contracts, like our, our certain insurances that we have. Are we going out to a market to look for different types of cyber insurance that might be less expensive but might have some more, might have some more benefits of that, right? So how can we look at all of our contracts along the way also to see where we could have some savings on that? But we really essentially have been trying to do that line by line and item by item this year.
Well, I'm, I'm not cheerleading here. I think it's a misconception that we don't do that or we're not doing that because we're just going to an override budget. But I, I think that that's really important because we're still in a highly inflationary environment. And I, I think keeping those costs in line with last year says something about the job that, that we're doing. But we do need to see if we can get out of that insurance consortium because the 20% is great. What, what, is there a mechanism to?
Yeah. So, so I think the first thing to know is that our insurance consortium provides lots of benefits to us as well, right? So, but I, and we, they actually met with all of us and we are trying to work strongly with them first to say, like, can we talk about our rate increases? Can you look at your reserves to see how you might be able to allocate these things? So we're playing a more active role in our rate increase. Is there a possibility that we could look at other, other insurances? As a region, we're starting to have that conversation as business officials because generally we all utilize the same insurance company. So we're all in the same boat. So we're all trying to collectively put our heads together to think about how do we not have those types of increases in the future? Or how do we look towards another solution for the school district?
Great. Thanks, Josh.
All right. I have a number of things. I think most of them would be things we'll probably ask you to look at, at a subsequent meeting, but I'll just put them out there now. So people know that, that they're important and that we want to take a look at them. I, I think in addition to thinking about these savings areas, I think it's important that the community also hear from us about items that were, I guess I'll call it on the district's wish list, but that never even made it into the conversation here for possible addition because we're trying to be mindful of the fact that, you know, we're considering an override here. And I, there's a number of those examples. There are segments of the community that, you know, have their thing that they wanted to see in here and are curious about, you know, were they even considered? And then why were they ruled out? And, you know, a couple of other items that, you know, Dr. Ackerman talked about today are on the list. So I, I hope that we can take a little bit of time to address some of those requests again. So people can see that we're trying to be prudent and really keep the requests just to the things that were really at the top of the list. So that's the sort of our first comment. There's not really even a question there, but just like, hopefully we can devote a, a little time to that next time. Something else that I know community members will want to see, and I know we don't quite have the numbers that we need for it yet, would be to actually produce that, the calculator that you used last year to help people figure out, well, what would this mean from a dollar and cents point of view per household? I think, again, for people to sort of translate what we're asking for here to their own pocketbook, being able to see, okay, well, based on the average home values in, in the community, what, what are we looking at? And how does it compare to the kind of increases that we've been accustomed to over the past few years? And I know you went into a lot of detail about, okay, not as high a budget, but more leaning into the tax levy. So I think people need to see that if they're going to be weighing, okay, is, are, are these additions, the necessary additions that we're putting in actually worth it now that we have, you know, we've heard from the community, we saw the surveys, we saw the interest that people brought to us. But when there's a price tag attached to it, I'm curious to see what kind of reaction that we'll get from people. So I hope we can, we can put that forward. Is that something that you think you'll be able to do again?
Yeah. So, so we have been working on the tax calculator similar to what we did with the BOM project. The item we're waiting for is the assessed values from the towns because they produce those in the next couple of weeks for us. While that 1.00 growth factor looks back, the assessed values would be the current year. So we just want to wait for that value before we produce that calculator. So we have some accurate numbers for everybody.
Perfect. Another question that I get a lot is, well, wait a minute, where's all these special projects? The, you know, people are aware of the terrific facilities that we have all around the district. And are those factored into how this is done? Are they being utilized to their maximum potential? Are they, is the maintenance cost for those things? And I know we have a facility section in a subsequent week. So can we look forward to hearing a little bit about how we address those costs?
Yeah, I think in, in, in technology, curriculum and facilities, you'll hear about the, the items that are, that our CSF has generally donated to us, our sports boosters has generally donated to us, our other organizations.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's perfect. And then the last one is just the sense of like, people are aware, we're contractually obligated to, you know, meet all of the different constituent groups that serve the district, but are curious about how good of a negotiator we are in those situations and wanting to have an understanding of, well, those are all on different cycles. And, you know, are we doing the best we can to get the best deal we can for our community?
Yeah. And I think in the coming weeks, we'll be able to talk about, I think Dr. Ackerman discussed that we're sort of at the tail end of some negotiations and hopefully can report back on that in the next few, in a little while.
All right. Perfect. Thank you.
So I know Christine, you talked about this a little bit before when we were showing, I tried to write down the slide numbers. Slide 57, when you talked about class size concerns and how families of grades two to four definitely, which are the majority of families with kids that are in grades two to four are the ones with these concerns. And definitely it is a tremendous, tremendous concern for families for that specific category. But I need to also think about everyone in the community that don't necessarily fall into that category because they do exist. And it's not to say that small class sizes aren't important or is not something that we need or want, but families with older students, empty nesters and et cetera, they will have their concerns and priorities as well. And so that family should be able to hold an opinion on what they feel are their priorities. But we have to make sure that we understand that everyone's priorities will be different. Everybody, all appear, this priority is going to be different. And what we want to see be the trade-off. So we can't just make a blanket statement and say, well, we want SROs and we want small class sizes. And so that's why the budget is this way. So, and I have been thinking a lot since our last board meeting and have been reflecting on the many conversations I've had with community members. And I know I was in the minority and may still be in the minority now, but I really want to make myself clear in asking, I'm not demanding, but I do think I have a responsibility to ask for an alternative budget plan that does not exceed the tax cap and what the options are for that. And it's not to say, well, if we take these three things out, or if we take those teachers out, or if we take not that option, but a different option, right? With the different priorities that some other part of the community might have. And I'm going to request that formally here today. And I'm going to request that formally here today, that we have an option to look at that doesn't go over the tax cap, and we have to ask ourselves, what do we want to accomplish here? What are the priorities, and how can we look at the entire community as a whole? And not everybody's going to agree, not, we don't agree up here, and that's okay. And, but I will say, and I know I've asked to, I asked you to include that contingency slide because, not because I want a plan that we're going to fail, but I will not and cannot vote to adopt a budget where we have not done our due diligence in asking the hard questions, looking at multiple options, and asking you to do the hard work, and really asking, how can we best serve our students? And that is my formal request today, that, and it's only one, I'm only one of five, but as a fiduciary of this community, I want to see a different option. And it's not just to say, okay, we're going to take SROs out, we're going to take small classes out, and here you are, we are now at the tax cap. So that's what I'm asking, Christine.
Yeah, I just need a little bit more guidance, because we've prepared a budget at the levy limit that is, that doesn't include higher class sizes, doesn't include the extra SROs, and has us allocating like three point five million of fund balance like we have in the past to the budget. So that's like the budget at the levy limit, the, the alternative is with those additions. So I think I just need a little bit more guidance as to like how to?
Well, I wouldn't.
As to, like, I'm sorry, Kaylee, just, you want us to provide a budget in the levy limit that has the, the, all the SROs in it, and the lower class sizes? I'm not sure how to do that without cutting into staff. So if that's what you would like me to do, I can, I think we've got to talk about, like, that a little bit more, because that is a, that's a model that I can present if, if the board would like me to. I think the alternative budget is, without all the enhancements that we're adding, based on community feedback.
Right, but it's only a certain portion of the community feedback, in that they might have, yes, they all had an opportunity, and we made it accessible to everyone, but it is still a certain portion, and I don't feel comfortable sitting here, and, to be honest, I don't know what it is exactly I'm asking for in terms of, like, are you, you're asking me, are you asking me to cut teachers? And no, not necessarily, and I'm not sure, but I'm asking you and your team to do the hard work and trying to be creative and seeing, are, have we exhausted all of our options in trying to do our due diligence? And saying, well, well, maybe we could just dip into our fund balance, or, I'm not really sure. So I don't want to have these options where it just seems like, it just seems very unfair to think about, well, we, we can just take this out, and that's easy. Like I said, everybody has different interests, and everybody has different priorities, and I want to be able to see a couple of different scenarios. And that's what I'm asking, and, you know, I might have to, I mean, I would have to get, I mean, I have a bunch of detailed questions too, but really, I need more. And I know we have a lot more meetings coming up, and we have a meeting every week, but I just need, I need more. I just want to be able to say to myself and say to the community members that I did the best that I can in trying to figure out, how can we move forward that makes sense for everyone? And I just can't, okay, let me finish. I just can't sit here and say that I will vote to adopt a budget where we have not done everything, and then some. That's all. Okay?
Can I just ask a clarifying question, Kaylee? When you're asking for a budget at the levy limit, sorry, at the tax cap limit, but you don't, you do want it to include the SRO and the smaller class sizes, and then look for some kind of cut somewhere else? Or are you looking for the budget that does not include those two? Because I thought you were, I thought, what I heard you say is that you wanted it to include the SROs and the smaller class sizes, but then I was confused, because then you talked about maybe not everyone filled out the survey, and you didn't think it was everyone's priority in the town, so I'm just trying to better understand your question.
Well, why don't we then do two more? Two more options.
So you, one, that just takes those two things out, and then one that has those two things in, but then cut something else?
I don't really have a preference in what gets cut and what doesn't, that's, if they can, there are people that work in this district that have better knowledge about what would really, really make sense, and I understand we're presenting one right now, but if we couldn't do that, and then I'm asking, can you provide then two more? Whether it's one, take out all the extras, and show us that, or, and then, then maybe think about different things you can take out.
So can, David, can you pull up slide forty, please? I just want to go back to this slide, because this is a levy limit budget, it's like a, like, real condensed slide around it, but I just want to go back to this slide without me clicking through a whole bunch of stuff. So this is a, this is a budget within the levy limit that includes, like, what we have currently in place without all the additions. So like, this is the levy limit budget that I would be presenting to you tonight, if I were presenting a budget without the enhancements that we talked about in the meeting in January. So I just want, I want to make sure that I provide you with the information that the full board would like, and so if you want me to readjust this slide to, to, to account for adding additional staff that are pushing us over the limit, which I just described, the three teachers and the, and the three SROs, and then the reduction of use of fund balance, is that what you're asking me to do, to provide it? So this is in the levy limit, right? And then what we provided you is a budget that's beyond it. Are you asking me to provide you another budget within the levy limit that includes what we just presented, and then cuts in other places? I gotta, I gotta cut somewhere to get to where you want me to be, so?
Right, so that's fine, so you could work on that with your team and cut somewhere. Yes, there's going to be cuts.
Can I ask a question? Because I'm sort of operating under the assumption, and correct me if I'm wrong, that in presenting a budget to us that was over the levy limit, you looked for everywhere you think you can cut and keep the district running at the level that parents and families expect the district to be, I mean, I've sort of been operating under that assumption, that if you're asking the community to go over the levy limit, as, you know, Josh said, you've been looking at every line down to like, where can we buy paper?
Right. So I think this might be helpful. So the first thing we did was, we rolled over the budget, right? We looked at all of our contractual obligations, we looked at all of our, our teaching staff, all of our faculty and staff, what our insurance premiums are increasing, what our, all of our benefit increases are, and then got to that point, right? So like, we didn't touch any program, we didn't touch any staff, we didn't touch any, anything that's in there, right? And that gets us, that got us to the majority of it. So, so we would have to look at program to look at any further reductions, right? Then we went department by department, line by line, and I met with every department, and we talked about where are their savings, where are the things that we could get some reimbursement, and went through line by line with each department's budget to get to the levy limit budget. So that, that was the process, and that was the process we took to get there, so.
I, I guess, I think in the end, my point is that we're asking a lot from our community, and I think we all agree, and we understand that. We're all community members, right? And if we're going to ask the community to go over and pay more money, I just don't want it to be a type of communication where it's like, this is what you asked for, and this is what it's going to cost. Yes, everything costs money, we have to balance our checkbooks. There's no doubt about that, but it can't be, it's just because of those things that you asked for, we have to go over. There's a lot, and, and if this is our only way and our only option, then, okay, that's what we do, but I, I am not confident, I'm not there yet. I personally am not. I know Christine, you're saying, if the full board wants it, but I'm telling you as one person, I can't speak for everybody. But, for example, like, we just appointed Alyssa Stover as next principal of West Orchard. She was the literacy director. What will happen to that position? I don't know. I, I'm just saying, so I'm just saying, we're asking for a lot, and I just want to make sure that we're asking the right questions, and we're thinking about it deeply and hardly, and it's no way am I saying that you haven't done that already, but let's do it again, because we have the rest of the month to do it, and we have to do it, we're responsible to do it, and that's all. And that, and I think that's fair.
So Kaylee, would it help, like, I'll put a straw man kind of hypothetical one out there, just to sort of try to clarify what you're getting at? Like, I could imagine a person in our community who?
Well, right, I don't need you to try to clarify what I'm getting at, I, I said what I wanted, and that's it. So don't try to clarify what I said. Okay?
I'm, I'm looking to, to give?
You can ask your own questions.
Okay. I'm looking to help the district team, who I think is looking for a little bit more guidance about what we want, and I think?
But you could just speak on your behalf.
Okay.
Don't speak on my behalf.
Okay. Sorry, that came out that way. I could imagine a community member that wanted to be kind of the most fiscally prudent possible, want to stay under the limit, and wanted the reserves restored, just as, like, that would be in keeping with the, that segment of the population that might feel that way. And so they might be looking for one of those three additions that we have on there that goes over, but we'd need to then recover that one point five, or maybe we just do it part of the way by taking off some of the things that are on the bottom of this slide. And so, for example, we'd have to retract two SROs off if we wanted to put more emphasis on restoring our reserves and stay within the tax cap. Do I have that right? Like, that we need to look for those kinds of examples to, to try to fulfill, like, that if it was, if, if we felt like that was a more prudent way to proceed?
Right, so, so for us to look at a levy limit budget that would include, include some of those three items, we would have to look at some of the additions and look at some other things to get there.
So I just, I would share, I would have a hard time, like, presenting a budget within the levy limit that included, like, six police officer, officers, but then would cut into, like, the instructional staff, right? So that, that's like, in my head, I'm trying to, like, think about, like, presenting you with something that I think makes sense, but also knowing, like, just to try to push everything down into the levy limit, that there is an outcome associated with that that's tied up in staffing, because it's most of the budget, it's like seventy percent of the budget, so. Yeah, I, I'm, I hear what Kaylee needs, but I also know we're in, in the midst of a process based on guidance that we received in January, right? So we have only a certain amount, a certain pot of money here. And so could we go through the exercise of, look, here's the levy limit budget, then we have the enhanced budget, could I provide it an additional option? I could. We could do that, we can, we can try to work on providing an additional alternative at the next meeting, is like another slide, that tries to keep in place some of what's pushing it over, but probably not everything. I probably wouldn't present to an option that would include, like, three SROs at the expense of cutting instructional staff, just philosophically, I would probably have a hard time with that. But I could try to, we can try to, like, put together just another way to look at this, but I do feel like, based on the work that's been done, and knowing, like, all the, the conversations, and then all the nuances of this, I do feel like we're presenting with you a budget that's pretty responsive, but also, like, this is the alternative, right? So you have one within the levy limit, and then you have one that's enhanced based on community, being responsive to the community. I can see if we can do like a third option, but I don't know if I'm going to be as confident that that's going to be as strong as these two options are for your consideration, but I, we can, we can try to do so.
I think the other thing that I didn't mention is that, I, I think people who want SROs, or people, or the families that are looking for smaller class sizes, which is all fair and good, these are all good things, but I don't necessarily know if everybody wants to pay more taxes, just because they want those things. So I'm just saying, let's think about it again.
So, a couple of questions, a couple, just comments? The first is that I just want to mention on the smaller class sizes, that we heard from a lot of people, not only families, but also from our teachers, that that was a priority. So, you know, I, I mean, truthfully, I, I'd like to see what's in this budget stay in the budget, I, you know, I feel pretty strongly, as I've said, about the SROs. I know many, many people disagree with me, but that's just where I come out, and, you know, we're going to, as Kaylee said, we're going to disagree on things. And, you know, I think that the, the smaller class sizes being a priority is something that we've heard a lot, and I want to ask, I guess, a couple of clarifying questions, but also to preview, that if we're not right about the state aid being restored, then we're going to have to have some hard conversations, so we may need to think about it in advance of, because I think that where we land with everything and no state aid is too high. Like, so I just want to say that, whereas I personally am comfortable with presenting the override budget, I'm not comfortable with where we get without state aid. So hopefully we don't get there, but I, I think, I just sort of wanted, wanted to put that out there.
We're in agreement with that.
Okay. And then I guess I have two questions that are probably Josh's questions. So, just to clarify, because I think a lot of this is, is hard to wrap your head around, it is for me, I'm sure, I hope it's not just me. If we had been successful, or if we are successful moving forward in getting safety expenses, tax cap exempt, would that actually change people's bill that comes in the mail, or would it just change our tax levy compliance?
It would not change what the tax levy is, it would just make it that we were within the tax cap limit, so that we would have, allow a fifty percent vote plus one, rather than have to go for an override budget to add that. So that's the only thing that changes, would be the tax cap, whether you do an override budget or not, not what the tax levy is for the community.
And then my other question, and this was a very early slide, but I didn't want to interrupt you. Very early on, you talked about the fact that our increase is less than last year, no, sorry, our budget increase is less than last year, but our levy increases more.
Right.
Can you just explain how that happens, why that happens?
Sure, so, so that happened for a few reasons. One is, we looked at some of the non-tax levy increases that have gone down, such as we're anticipating income, interest income going down a little bit, and there's, you saw that budget to budget, there's about a two hundred thousand dollar loss of state aid due to some reimbursement, so that's like part one of that. The other part of that is that because we're going over the levy limit, right, that increases that portion of the budget, which is all taxable items, right, as part of the tax levy. So, so that is why that, that tax levy is increasing rate, at a greater percent than the, than, than the rest of the budget, why it's a little bit above that, so that's why it's slightly above that. That's really the, the reason, because the portion of your budget is tax items, right, that are going to go over towards that, because we're predominantly a tax-based school district. And that's really, if you look at the formula and the numbers, that, that's really how that happened. So slight decrease in a couple of things, but we're increasing in others. It's also, the other piece of it is that we're not anticipating any increase of foundation aid, right? So we're anticipating that being flat, so our budget is increasing, but our foundation aid is remaining flat at best, right? So that's the other reason why that happens. Why that happened.
Could I just add one thing? Sorry, Christine. I saw that face, so.
No problem.
What Hillary just said, and just to piggyback this, it's not just parents of a certain cohort who want. Smaller class sizes, it's the faculty as well. And that's also true of the SROs. I mean, that's clear in the slide. So this is. This is not in response to you, Kaylee, at all, but this is more. Many people have come to these meetings and ascribed. Just a certain small subsection of parents who are very loud and vocal about supporting the SRO program, but we also have to acknowledge. It's in the data that the faculty also is in support of it as well.
That is true. I did, I just, I was just trying to be mindful that the faculty don't pay taxes, but.
No, 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 no.
I did demonstrate in the presentation specifically around that issue. And I also, there is a value in allowing people to decide, right? So, you know, putting it up to, because the compelling arguments around having SROs are pretty significant. And so allowing people to vote and decide in that way, as Ryan shared at the last meeting, is the most democratic process here and. If, if it's what the, the community wants to support, then it is supported and it is so. And if the community decides not to support it through their votes, then that's, then so it is that way too, so be it. And so we just move forward and we plan forward. I do share though that. Making that decision for the community with the information that we have. As a singleton recommending a, a budget to you is concerning to me. I would, I would prefer that parents weigh in on that and, and our, our residents before I, I. I make that decision for us based on what I know and how people are feeling. So I just, that's something I think about too, so. It was the same thing for the front of Greeley. Like just allowing people to vote on that and make that decision and then moving forward. So I'm thinking about it sort of in that way. But I understand there's different ways to think about it as well.
And so, yeah, so I also just want to make clear, I know that Hillary, you agree with me in that we disagree. And, and that's okay. But. I just want to make clear my disagreement is not that I'm anti-SRO. Or anti-small class sizes. And I don't want the narrative to be something that's not true. And so I need to make that clear to everybody that. That is not what I'm saying. I'm looking at you, but I, I'm not saying, I'm not speaking to just you, but I'm.
I got you.
Yeah.
Can I ask one last thing? Josh, I know you talk. I know you talked about there being no growth in the tax base, which is. More a town issue than our issue. But is that something with new housing being built in our town that that in theory would increase or is?
Yeah, as long as that increases to the assessment of the towns, that would increase to that tax growth. Base that would happen, right? So, so there's a few different ways that that tax base growth can happen. One is by new construction, new taxable items that are within the town. The other is increased assessed values. But I think the thing also to note is that that looks back a year and then the tax valuation is this current year, right? So that's a piece just to note also, so the controller's office can give us a different number next year, but. But new construction is one way that that would happen.
So theoretically, the fact that they're building literally 100 houses across the street should help going forward.
Right, as long as it wasn't.
That's what I was getting at.
As long, I, I don't have the answer to this question, but I just want to pose it as a question, as long as that wasn't previously. Commercial property that was taxed somewhere else before that, right? So like there's just other factors that are involved in that, so I don't want to make that statement and, and it just not come to fruition.
Okay, so I just want to summarize what, so we all have the same. Understanding of what's happening at the next meeting. So we're gonna do our component budget, right? And then after that's done, we're gonna add on a few slides and we're gonna talk about things that we were. We would have liked to budget for, but we decided not to. Josh is gonna give you hopefully a timeline on that tax calculator, but we're waiting for more information. We're to talk about how we support special projects, like for an example, the Sustainability Center, how we paid for it and how we support it. And then we're gonna, we're gonna construct an alternative. Like we, we have a levy limit budget and people understand what that looks like right now. And then we have an override. We're gonna try to reconstruct the budget within the levy limit. That has some of the components of the override within it and kind of look at what that trade off. Might, could, could, could perceivably be. So we'll try to add a slide in there with like, like another option. Based on some of the feedback that we're hearing tonight. Okay, but I just want to share with you in advance that option probably for me wouldn't include. Police at the expense of instruction. So I just, I, that's, I just, so I just want, I'm just thinking about that. So if the board has additional feedback they want before we get ready for next Wednesday, that kind of doesn't align with that, just let me know. And so we can work on that. Because this is your budget that I'm presenting to you, okay? All right, and so if anyone has any, thank you, everybody, for your feedback.
And then if there's anything that our community wants us to be thinking about, just send us an email. And if, if, you know, sometimes what happens is the community requests information. And we totally appreciate that and sometimes it's easy to answer, but then there, but then there'll be like questions or comments, like you need to present this at the board meeting. And I appreciate that too, but we'll present at the board meeting what the board asks us to present. So if you have something that you'd like us to, like. Talk about like holistically like this. You can certainly provide a suggestion and then we'll move forward at the, at the guidance of, of the board. And so some of those slides tonight you saw was based on feedback given to the board and they asked us to present on it. So that, that's how that works. So we can manage the, the incoming, because there's a lot of people that live here, but. Certainly reach out to us. If you have specific budget questions, Josh is available to talk to you. He's, he's our numbers person and I want to thank him. There's a lot of work. This is, this is the most comprehensive budget I think we've presented.
Yeah, thank you, Josh.
I think our email address is wrong on there.
We'll, we'll fix it. BOE, right?
Just BOE, at chapacascles.org.
Most people have.
It'll get, it'll get to it.
Yeah, but they both.
They both were.
Okay, so, yes, Hillary.
And just thank you because, you know, we, we went into this budget season saying. You know, give the community all the information that's out there and thank you because I know it was a ton of work, but I also think. We have a community that is not only very well educated, but wants to be really informed and really engaged in this process. And I think it's important. To give them the tools and the opportunity to do so and to be so because. Regardless of what the final budget we're asking people to approve looks like. It's a lot of money, right? So I think that before we ask people to. Spend their money on taxes. We need to make clear how we got to that place and what we're, what they're getting for it and what our community is getting for it. So I really appreciate all the work that you put in. This was a huge presentation, but it was very helpful.
Thank you. Okay. So that brings us to committee reports. Does anybody have a committee report?
I have two actually, sorry. Almost fell asleep. Adam, thank you for reminding me. February 15th was a long time ago and, and I was not there for a work obligation, but the Green Committee did meet at Grafflin. So they could facilitate a tour of the hydroponics lab and the greenhouse. And during the tour, the committee was treated to a salad grown by the students and Adam, I'd have to hear how it was. Good.
It was fantastic. There was evidence of, the students weren't there with us. We actually met in like late afternoon, early evening, but it was fantastic. You could see the evidence of the, you know, students all around with various things that they had posted and obviously grown. And yeah, we were treated to a, a nice salad, which was delicious. It was a mix of, a mix of greens and some cucumbers that they had grown, which was really neat.
Uh, you guys also toured the greenhouse and that along with the hydroponics lab is funded by the CSF grant, so. As always, thank you for the, to the CSF for partnering with us. And the next meeting, I believe, will be touring an educational composting facility in Valhalla, correct, in the spring?
Yeah, that's right. We were invited down. They have an educational facility down there where they support field trips, so we figured that that would be fun. We're actually gonna bring a few students with us as well. It's down in Valhalla.
Great, and then the sports boosters met last night and it is locked in. It's gonna be Saturday, June 8th at Captain Lawrence Barrel House. As evidenced by the opening of this meeting today, which seems like yesterday at this point. We have really some exceptional athletes here at Greeley. But we have over 1,800 athletes in total that need to be sort of privately funded, so that event is gonna go a long way. In helping our athletes perform at the highest level and continue to do so, so. That's June 8th at the Mount Kisco Captain Lawrence Barrel House.
Well, on February 15th, we also had a wellness meeting here at Greeley and it had been changed from an earlier date. And we went over the survey results of our middle school lunch survey. So that was very interesting. We were debating lunch at Bell and 7B and if there is a disconnect between the two. It seems like there might be in that 7B kids are buying their lunch. I'm sorry, other way around. 45% of the Bell kids are not buying their lunch. And Bell kids 40% do buy lunch every day. So we wanted to take a closer look and the survey was, had a lot, a million questions and we went through, you know, is service good? Is food good? Do you like the food? Asked questions from every angle and both to parents and students. And I believe faculty as well, right? Were asked that question about the lunch?
It was a student survey.
Student survey, okay, but parents responded as well. And so as a result of the survey and the different. Feedback we got, we're going to take a tour of both cafeterias at 7B and Bell and check out what's going on for lunch. Because both, the food is the same at both cafeterias and the offerings are the same. So we're going to go on a little field trip and check it out. And see if there is a disconnect in anything that's happening in lunchrooms because we want our kids to have the same experience in both, in both places.
Did they like lunch?
They think the service is great. And they, they like lunch, it's school lunch.
They provided some constructive feedback.
Yes, we got constructive feedback and it's just interesting that, you know, they seem to be. Buying lunch, you know, a lot more at 7B and so we want to sort of dig into that and figure out why that is. And, but the food is the same in both places, so we just want to sort of delve a little deeper and we're gonna do that with starting with a tour of the cafeterias and the kitchens. So that's coming soon. I think that was all that we wanted to add.
I don't have a committee report per se, but one of our obligations as the Board of Education is to do a facilities walkthrough of all the buildings. Each year and we have done half of them and are doing the other half Friday morning, so. By the end of this week, we will have fulfilled that obligation and done our facilities walkthrough. And the good news is most of the identified issues are already being accounted for in the bond that was passed. So there are things we know need to be replaced, but we've already figured out how to pay for them. Which is better than when we walk through and things need to be replaced and we have no idea how to pay for them. So we're in pretty good shape with the facilities tour. All right, that brings us to public comment for you stalwart folks who are still here. We welcome public comments and in respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may be contacted via email or phone. After the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion amongst themselves regarding comments presented. And just a reminder, please do not use any personal identifiable information in your comments. All right, somebody, come on down.
Hi, I'm Peggy McKetto and I am a parent of a Greeley student and I have lived in the district since 1998. I prepared remarks tonight and I was really happy that some of the discussion about the budget hit on things. One thing in particular was moving the originally planned date of adopting a budget from March 27th to later in the process. So I think that that was among the things that I was worried about. I'm relieved that the board tonight has been articulating more specific questions about the budget. I know you all talk a lot, you know, by yourselves even before the meeting and that's a necessary process. But I think it's really important for the community to see that dialogue and exchange happen. One of the things that I am concerned about is the reliance on survey and focus groups. In leading our budgetary decisions. I know that that is an important factor and people want to be heard, but it is only one element of the process. And when I'm, was thinking, you know, as Kaylee was talking about different areas of the budget. And also from the, the slide that came up. I would like to know if, since we did a survey a couple of years ago and people wanted something on belonging. I would like to know now, like if our, maybe the community has changed their mind about that or it's on the list of priorities, but maybe safety is higher. So I would like to see if we cut that piece out that we added based on some of the community feedback. We have different community feedback now and I think we need to know just what the exchanges are. The second thing about, you know, relying on survey and focus groups. The way the questions are worded can be interpreted differently by different people. And not all of the information can be reflected in a, in a yes, no, or a Likert scale. But for things like an SRO, the cost of an SRO is very different than the cost of an armed guard. And an SRO is a 12-month commitment that involves also our taxes from the town. So what's appearing in the school budget as the cost of an SRO is only the cost to the school. Not the whole cost to the taxpayer and to the town. Whereas if you went with just an armed guard that could be here for the 180 days, then that would be. A different set of costs. It also is a different skill level and a different approach. So I think those are some of the things that are missed. I'm done. Anyway, I really appreciated all your discussions tonight and I look forward to the other things. And I really appreciate the debate between the members of the board. I think that's an important thing for the community to see.
Hi, my name is Barrett Flom. I'm the mother of a child in the district. There were several things that stood out to me tonight, but one of the statements that Dr. Ackman made, that there are compelling arguments in favor of SROs. I just want to say that that's not accurate and that studies, for example, published by JAMA. Show that the presence of armed guards increases the number of deaths by 2.8 times. And the fact that we're considering going over the tax cap. To spend over $1 million on police officers is upsetting. Especially when there's decreases in spending in special ed. When, if I'm remembering the numbers from the board meetings last year, Jamie had indicated that the estimates. For the incoming CPSE students was greater than it had been in the prior years, so the fact that we potentially have. More students that have needs, but we're decreasing the costs, these types of things are concerning. And, yeah, I support doing an alternate budget because the other thing is. This fact that we're submitting this over tax cap budget. As the option without looking at other potential options. When it's going to cost us money to do another vote if it's voted down is also concerning. So like we should be having these conversations now. We should be dealing with this now, not after it's potentially rejected. It's just more money spent on useless things in this district. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Julie Bauber. I have a junior at Greeley. So I wanted to point something out. You did not give the numbers for. The equalization rate, which I'm not sure if you have them yet. But there is an equalization rate and it means that two parts of the town get taxed differently. So when you said that we always stay under the tax cap, that's accurate, that, that has been accurate. But people who live in Mount Pleasant often get 4%, 5%, 6% because when the equalization rate comes down, we get taxed much higher than the rest of the community. And so I think it's somewhat, I, I don't want to say. And so I think it's somewhat, I don't want to say disingenuous, but it's misleading to say we always stay under the tax cap because yes, you do for most of Newcastle, but you don't for Mount Pleasant. So when I'm looking at you talking about a 3% or a 4% tax cap or tax levy, I'm not looking at it as a 2%, you know, a 3%. I could be looking at 9%. I could be looking at 10%. That's unsustainable and we have to consider that. So I think it's fair to ask that you actually present a history of tax increases of both towns so that we understand what we're looking at and what people have been asked to pay over, over history. Last year was an anomaly. We definitely, we had, we had a negative. It was, we were, we were partying in our neighborhood, but it's not normal. So, and it's not expected in the future because it just never happens. So that's the first thing. The other thing was that I had requested to Board of Ed members that the community have shared with them an organizational chart, something that starts with Dr. Ackerman at the top and goes all the way down to all of the teachers and staff developers, everything else and kind of lays out for us, are staff developers considered administration? Are they teachers? Where does it come from in the budget? So we understand when we're saying that we see all these administrators, some of us are seeing people who may not be administrators who, but they have no contact with our children. And we want to understand as a community where there may be what the community feels is excess. So to Kaylee's point, where is there cuts possible? We don't know that if there's cuts possible because we don't understand your structure. So we would really enjoy seeing something that shows us, the community, the structure and where maybe you could cut one person so that you can add a teacher because as we pointed out, a lot of the new teachers coming in are making far less than what some of the higher level people are making. The other thing was that in the past, we always had budget meetings in person. When you did budget meetings with the PTA, they were in person. They were informative, they were interactive and they informed everybody in the community. People could ask questions freely and there was a free exchange and dialogue. When we continuously have it, could I have just one moment?
Can I have a motion, please, to extend the speaker's time by one minute?
I'll move.
All in favor? Give another minute.
Okay. So just, I, I think that it would go a long way to getting support from the community and whatever you choose to do with the budget to make yourselves, make the entire board, not just you having to, you know, the coffees, but make the presentation and make it more interactive so the community feels like they have a little bit more of a say or, or that they're being heard more than coming up and speaking and not having any feedback. And that's it. Thank you.
I'm a parent in the district. I have three children. I'm also in a lung. I want to comment and just encourage the board and the administration to take some leadership in advocating for the override budget. I know it has been presented as, by most on the dais, as the leading option, the option you'd like to lead us to, but I've also heard it presented in an almost apologetic manner about how we shouldn't go over the tax cap. We look at the last 10 years or so of data. But I'm going to say as someone who started kindergarten here in 1987, the budget increases used to be a lot higher. And the way that we built this community and the reputation of this school was by investing in it. Matt Auerbach also, I think, was trying to prompt a stronger presentation for the override budget in light of the, you know, highly inflationary environment we're in, Consumer Price Index. So yes, we are looking at an override budget here, but compared to the, you know, massive increases in all of our costs, we're really just, in my opinion, the override budget is really just trying to continue to provide a similar level of education that our district always has. So that is what I encourage you to do, maybe present some stronger data saying, hey, let's go back 30, 40 years. Let's see how, you know, everyone who moved to this town moved because they heard great things about this town. That reputation was forged through the investments that the community made in the 80s, the 90s, the aughts. Let's continue that. So that's what I encourage you to do. Thank you.
Okay. Couple things. Josh, can you talk about when the tax equalization rates might be ready?
Yeah, so along with the assessments, the tax equalization rates probably, they usually come out the first of April and I've been looking on the site daily to see if they keep posting the next ones. It's a flip of a year or so. So I'm hoping by the first of April, the latest, but we're getting indications we might get them a little sooner than that.
Yeah, I just want to say one thing about the last comment and the word advocacy because I just want to be clear to the community because this is something that's come up both in terms of budgets and in terms of bonds. As strange as this may sound, there are very strict laws on what board members are allowed to and not allowed to say vis a vis a budget and vis a vis what would be considered advocacy. And it's complicated enough that we actually asked our attorney to, to write us a memo on what we are and are not allowed to say regarding the budget and, and what would be considered advocacy. So whereas I appreciate your, your position that we, you know, what we do up here, we certainly can do, but I just want to be clear with the community because I think there are a lot of questions around this, we're actually not allowed to like affirmatively advocate for the passing of a budget, which I know sort of seems weird because we will approve said budget, but there's New York State law for you. So I just, because I know this came up with, with the bond where people sort of said, well, you didn't seem to be pushing really hard and, well, we can't. So I, I recognize that that sounds weird. It sounded weird to me when I joined the board, but I just wanted to, to put that out there because I, I think that there are community members who, regardless of this year, whether it's all years, whether it's bond, whether it's a budget, find it weird that we're not going out there as cheerleaders, but it's, it's not something we're able to do.
Yeah, I also feel like we were presenting a very responsive budget to community-based needs and concerns that have been raised over a number of years, but I also mindful that we're asking voters to consider overriding a levy limit and that's not typical. So I'm trying to balance out what I feel like I'm presenting based on what I believe we need in this moment versus understanding what I'm asking you to consider. So, so next week, we'll be back at it, a little bit different context, but we'll, we'll address some of the board concerns and if there's additional information you'd like us to prepare through the slides, just let us know. So thank you, everybody, and thank you for your comments.
Okay, that brings us to approvals and ratifications. We can take items 3.1 through 3.3 together. That's accepting meeting minutes, rather, of the February 7th, February 15th, February 28th meetings and work sessions. Can I have a motion for 3.1 through 3.3? Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Okay, I will move item 3.4, which is policy 4005, the elementary and secondary curriculum development.
Second. Okay, so this is up for adoption consideration. We've received no feedback on the policy, so we've made a few minor adjustments, but I feel like we're in a good place where our families know how to bring concerns around instructional materials forward to the teacher, then to the building principal, then to the superintendent and then ultimately the Board of Education. So I feel like we're in a good position with this policy to move it, to move it forward at this point for adoption consideration.
Any questions or concerns from board? All in favor?
All right.
Okay, 3.5 is policy 5105, student club, sixth reading. I will move 3.5.
Second. Okay, so this policy has been revised and reviewed six times, which is great. We've never had a, it's a new policy. We've never had it. I view it as a guidance policy for our kids to help them as they navigate their advocacy around certain clubs and their, and their willingness to want to create new opportunities for them to interact with each other under our supervision. So we are at a point where I'd, I'd like you to consider adopting it. It does not go into effect until July of, of this upcoming year, so it gives us some room if there's some adjustment that needs to be made before September, but at this point, I feel like we've made enough revisions that this is, we're, we're okay moving this forward because the high school's going to have to start to develop some procedures and I'd like them to begin to do that now.
Does Board have any questions or concerns? All in favor?
I just want to thank Ryan and Kaylee. There's been a lot of work on, on, on these two policies and so thank you for helping us navigate through this with our attorney. So thanks. All right. I recommend 4.1 instructional as presented.
I'll move that we accept 4.1 as presented.
I actually do have a question on this one.
Yeah?
Which is I see that we have a sort of midway through the year retirement of a teacher, which is not common.
Right.
How are we going to make sure that those kids get continuity in that class?
Andrew, you want to talk about the plan?
Sure, yeah. It's not, it's not usual for, to have a retirement in the middle of the year. This, we do have this and we have 30 days plus the spring break to secure a lead replacement and a position till the end of the year, working right now with the high school administration and the math department to pull together. We've posted for it and we're moving ahead as quickly as possible. I'm confident that we'll be able to cover the classes and have a certified teacher in place to support the kids through the remainder of the year.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, concerns? All in favor?
I recommend 4.2, non-instructional as presented.
Anyone? I'll move 4.2. Questions, concerns? All in favor? Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda. The use of a consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate that that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. As a preliminary matter, is there anything that anybody wants removed from the consent agenda tonight? Okay. Our consent agenda tonight is 5.1 through, these are long, 5.14, which is CSE summaries and a number of things related to the budget vote and election themselves and other contracts related to curriculum and other contracts and also the, the gift, the Regeneron Talent Search gift that we won because our student did something completely awesome. So thanks again to her for her incredible science research and winning the, the stipend for both herself and the district. That's an incredible gift to us. So I guess I'll move the consent agenda, which is 5.1 through 5.14.
Second.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns? All in favor?
All right.
Can I have a motion, please, for 6.1, which is acknowledging a contract approved by Dr. Ackerman?
Second.
Questions or concerns? All in favor? Okay, there's nothing under seven, so that brings us to eight. We can take 8.1 through 8.4 together, which is acknowledging receipt of the claims auditor report for January 2024, acknowledging receipt of the treasures report for January 2024, acknowledging receipt of the appropriation status report for January of 2024, and acknowledging the receipt of the revenue status report for January 2024. Can I have a motion for 8.1 through 8.4?
I'll move. Second.
Questions or concerns? All in favor? Okay. Brings us to notice of future meetings. We'll be back here next week and the week after that. So our next meeting is Wednesday, March 13th at 7:00 PM, which will be the Curriculum Technology, Special Education and Athletics Budget Presentations. And we will also hopefully address some of the questions that were raised tonight. And then subsequent to that, on the 20th will be the Operations and Maintenance, the non-instructional, the Revenue, Tax Rate and Contingency Budget Presentation. Both will be here. That's true even with the show?
Yes.
Okay.
At this point.
If that changes, we will let you know. Can I please have a motion to adjourn at 9:56 PM?
I'll move.
All in favor? We're adjourned.